Chair Holland.
Here.
Commissioner Adams.
Here.
Commissioner Sand.
Here.
Commissioner Beck.
Here.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Here.
Commissioner Lark.
Here.
Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
So first, we have three items on the agenda tonight. One is advertised as a public hearing, but first I'd like to know if the commissioners had an opportunity to review the February 2nd, 2016 meeting minutes, and if so, have any comments or motions?
I have one correction. I wasn't there, but on the last page it says the next meeting is planned for March 2nd.
I noticed it.
Any other comments or corrections?
I'll move approval of the minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn.
Obey.
Commissioner Lark.
Yes.
Commissioner Zelinski.
Yes.
Commissioner Beck.
Yes.
Commissioner Sand.
Yes.
Commissioner Adams.
Yes.
Chair Holland.
Yes. So this part of the agenda, we have any reports of any of the commissioners? Go ahead, Commissioner Beck.
So I actually made the tree committee meeting this month. Found the location. And just wanted to let the commission know that they are working on a tree ordinance, so we will actually probably be hearing from the tree committee through Parks and Recreation, maybe in the next few weeks, coming months. John Peterson's in kind of leading that cause. I don't know if he'll take it to staff first, so I don't actually know the exact channels, but they are working on a tree ordinance, and they're looking at the city of Tacoma as kind of a guiding example, so.
Great. Any other reports from the commissioners? Seeing none, any staff comments?
Yes, Alan Giffen, planning director. I would like to introduce to you one of our newer staff members, Becky Abelman-McCrory. Becky is our Housing and Community Development Program Manager. She'll be presenting item three tonight. She comes to us from the city of Lake Stevens after being planning director there for about 10 years, so we're very happy to have Becky on board, so she'll be up a little bit later.
Welcome. This is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the planning commission on anything that's not on the agenda, so if you have anything you'd like to bring to the commission's attention, this would be the time to do it. Seeing none. Just for a matter of clarification, it looks like we have two alternate tonight, we have two members who are not in attendance, so it looks like everybody will be able to vote tonight, so. And our first agenda item is for marijuana retail limits, and I guess I'll turn that over to Alan.
Thank you. Well, this is getting pulled up on the screen. Wanted to make a few comments. The city council had a public hearing on the, I believe it was the 2nd of February, anyway, toward the beginning of February, and at that time they were considering an emergency moratorium to not allow any additional retail marijuana stores in the city of Everett. And you may recall that when we were working through these regulations previously, the state had allocated the number of retail stores to jurisdictions based upon population, and for the city of Everett, the number that was allocated was five. And then last year in the state legislature, the, our elected officials decided to combine the medical marijuana regulations with the recreational marijuana regulations, so that the pretty much unregulated medical marijuana stores would have to fall under the regulation of the recreational marijuana stores and liquor and cannabis sport. Based upon that consolidation, the medical marijuana stores in the state will be having to close down, and the state has decided that in order to allow for access for medical marijuana users, that they needed to increase the number of stores that would be permitted in the state above that number that had previously been allocated for the recreational stores, and so they decided a doubling of that number was appropriate, and so they have made these administrative changes in the WAC, and so in the city of Everett would be, if our regulations remained unchanged, able to cite in theory up to 10 recreational marijuana retail stores. They still would have to, under current regulations, have to meet separation requirements from sensitive land uses, which is 1,000 feet from activities like schools and commercial daycare centers and libraries and public parks where children play, and there's also a 2,500-foot separation requirement between retail marijuana stores. And so wanted to just show you the location of existing stores on the screen here. We have five that are approved in Everett within the city limits, three toward the north end of the city, one on Broadway, a new one that is just about to open up on Everett Avenue, one in the 4,200 block of Rucker Avenue, one in about the 6,300 block of Evergreen Way, and one at about, I think this is around 8,900 block or so of 19th Avenue Southeast, about the Everett Highway. I also have a different colored circle on this map for a store, that recreational marijuana store that is outside the city limits but right across the street from the city limits, and based on the way our ordinance is written, makes no distinction between whether a retail store is located within the city or the unincorporated portion of the county or another city, and so that 2,500-foot separation requirement would apply in this case, this store is located across the street from Walmart on the east side of Evergreen Way. So what we have then, you can see the shaded areas, and there are very few of them left after you apply the separation requirements of the 2,500 foot between retail stores, very few areas located in Everett that are available for a retail marijuana store. It's like the largest area is probably in the Everett Mall vicinity, an area north of Silver Lake, and a few other areas, but not very many. So whether or not five additional stores could locate outside of those separation distances and find a willing property owner to lease or sell property to them remains to be seen, but in concept, you could have up to 10 additional, excuse me, five additional stores for a total of 10 within the city limits. The city council considered the emergency moratorium. It required five votes as an emergency to be successful, to pass. It had four votes, and therefore failed. In a subsequent council meeting, the council asked the planning commission to consider, and kind of back to the normal process, non-emergency process, anytime you're looking at a code amendment to our land use code that goes through the planning commission before the city council makes a decision on a non-emergency basis. And so they've asked the commission to consider whether or not to do the same thing that the city council was considering, which would be to put a limit on the number of retail stores at the existing number that exist in the city, at five, or if you leave the regulations alone, it would allow up to 10, or should there be some number in between five and 10? And so they've asked for commission to consider this and make a recommendation back to the council. The council wanted this to be done fairly expeditiously, and we've scheduled a public hearing for them tomorrow night, should the commission make a recommendation tonight. I'm sorry, not a public hearing. A briefing and first reading tomorrow night. Public hearing would be two weeks from tomorrow night on the 16th of March, so the normal process for passing an ordinance should commission make a recommendation tonight. And so we've drafted a resolution in your packet that gives you those three choices, five, 10, or some number in between, based on a conversation, or excuse me, a question I had earlier today in reviewing it with the city attorney. The city attorney did say that commission could come up with some other recommendation, not be limited just to those three. Those were the three obvious choices based upon the city council conversation, and that's the way that the resolution has been framed for your consideration tonight. That, staff does not have a recommendation, and these are the three potential actions that we've identified.
Thank you, Alan. Just let the record state that Commissioner Teasdale is now present, so as far as voting tonight, we would do alternate one, which would be Commissioner Lark would be the voting tonight, so. With that, is there any questions of staff before we open up the public hearing?
Alan, did you say that the allowable number is five now? Or is it just five because of, that's how many have applied and meet the other criteria?
Under the current regulations, with the state changing their rules, we could have up to 10. There are five that are currently within the city limits. One is about to open, the fifth one is about to open, but the, with the change in the state regulations and no limit in our own ordinance on the number.
Okay.
The state and our regulations would allow up to 10.
So the fact we have four plus one pending is kind of just a circumstance of the applications.
That's where we are in the process, as these businesses have worked their way through the state and city approval processes.
And then kind of a follow-up to your point about the, what was advertised for the meeting tonight? If the planning commission so felt compelled, they could have a recommendation to council to make no change and also to revisit a ban on the stores, on retail stores?
The commission can make whatever recommendation that it wants tonight. It could go beyond the three alternatives that are identified, so if you had additional comments or items that you want to recommend to the city council, you are able to do that.
Okay, so we could make a recommendation to follow what other communities have done, which is to completely ban the retail use, but then those who have permits would have a non-conforming right to continue?
Right, and I don't, again, not being an attorney, I can't tell you whether or not there'd be, if we, if city council were to implement a ban, I think we'd probably have some, probably some legal claims against the city, undoubtedly, but the, the city could enact a ban. It would be a little bit late probably for the five stores.
Right.
Other communities have enacted a ban, the courts have upheld that, and so just as you can ban retail stores completely within your community, you can enact a number that's different than what the liquor and cannabis board would otherwise allow. It could be more restrictive, but obviously not less.
Thank you.
Do you know what the state's justification is for the number of stores that they will allow a city? I mean, so how did they come up with five, and now they're coming up with 10?
It was, I can't tell you exactly the methodology they used, but they came up with a number that's double what their previous allocation was.
But there is a process in which they kind of basically go through to scrutinize?
Right, and I can't pretend to explain how the process worked, but they did look at the number of medical marijuana stores and the need for patients of medical marijuana to have access to that product, and therefore they decided that based on population and eliminating the existing medical marijuana stores, that they would double the number of allowed stores if communities such as Everett did not enact a different.
Do we have any medical marijuana dispensaries in Everett?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yeah, thank you. So point seven on the resolution says that there are many retail marijuana stores located in unincorporated areas of Snohomish, but the, but those will be closing, is that correct? Because those are medical dispensaries? They've been giving cease and desist, so it's point seven?
Not retail, not recreational retail. Medical marijuana stores will be closing, but recreational stores are not.
Okay, and then number eight says, so it says many cities, which would employ, or imply a majority. Many cities have enacted total bans. Do you know that there's a majority of cities? There's 23 in Snohomish County, so I think only five have banned them?
No, this wasn't intended to imply that it was a majority. Many just means more than a, more than a small number, I guess. Not a technical definition, but it wasn't intended to imply that a majority of cities have, but cities surrounding us have enacted either bans or moratoria, and that would include Marysville, Snohomish, Linwood, Mill Creek, and probably a number of others. The ones immediately closest to the city of Everett have enacted either ban or moratoria.
And then number 10 says that existing retail stores in Everett will be permitted by the state liquor and cannabis board to provide medical marijuana. Do you know that those stores have been approved for their permits to do that, or have they applied for them?
The liquor and cannabis board has established a process whereby they can be approved for providing medical marijuana to patients, and I'm not sure that this reads, when it says, when it says will be permitted, subject to the state review process. So there's a process whereby medical marijuana patients can be provided for medical needs through their existing recreational stores.
It could be.
Yes.
Okay.
In the things that I've read, it looks like they have to get a second endorsement in order to do that, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that any have been, maybe one has asked for a permit, but it's inaccurate to say that they will be permitted.
Any other questions of staff?
Just two real quick things. First off, just to put on the record, I think we received two letters that also came by email, and I assume everybody got a copy of those, so just want to acknowledge that we received those. And then second of all, Alan, if, if the emergency ordinance had passed, or if a limit on the number of stores is put in place, will this come back to us for review on the ordinance as a whole, like signage issues, or are we going to take a look at everything again, or is it really just a limitation issue that we're looking at right now?
First of all, it had the emergency ordinance passed, it would have required a subsequent review by the planning commission. There was a work program or work plan that had been incorporated into that draft ordinance that failed, that would have given the city a year to review and study a number of things that were identified within that work plan. But now with this process, going through the normal channels of a land use amendment, if council takes some action to amend the existing regulations based upon whatever action you recommend, they don't have to agree with the commission, then that is not something that necessarily will come back to the planning commission. Knowing the history of this item, it probably will.
Just a point of clarification, Commissioner, we've heard to two letters. I saw one from Jamie Curtis Smith that was forwarded yesterday. Is there a second one?
I believe we had an email from a fellow commissioner that got circulated.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, prior to opening up the public testimony as part of the public hearing, I just wanted to see if there was any conflicts of interest from the planning commissioners before we begin with that, so, that they'd like to disclose. Seeing none. I guess we'll open up the public hearing portion of the, this agenda item, and I have three people that have signed up to speak to the commission. If you'd like to speak, please make sure to fill out the sign-in sheets, which are located on the table over there. But the first person we have is Donald Jakes. And if you could please state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Donald Jakes. Don't worry about it. And I'm the chief operating officer for Electric Mirror Corporation, and we're on Associated Boulevard. We just moved into the city limits. We used to be in unincorporated Snohomish County, and about two and a half months ago we moved in. We bring with us 400 employees, we're in a new, brand-new space of about 125,000 feet, and we hire a lot of people in the area. I'll come back to them in a minute. We signed up for this space before the city council allowed pot stores and retail, retail distribution of marijuana in the Everett area. And it just, just stepping back from it, as we looked at this, had that been the case, we looked from Woodinville all the way up to Arlington, that would have been a, it wouldn't have looked as favorable to be in the Everett marketplace, because we hire so many people from the local market. It just, it really wouldn't have helped. We've, we've had several discussions. If we were an economic development council ourselves and the company, we think through, what are the top things that are going to attract you to a community where you'd want to bring a business? And we thought it through, we've got about 140 professionals and 240 skilled laborers, and what we'd, you know, what would we want to see? First of all, we'd want to see a lot of people who we could hire and keep for a long time that would help us do some great business, a lot of community amenities and things that would just be a great place to be. One of the things that would not appear on that list is just, you know, large-scale distribution of marijuana drugs and things of the other sort. And it just, this, I would just encourage you as you're, as you're making your recommendations for tomorrow evening, just to think that through. This city has a lot of great opportunity, and if we start looking to generate revenue by marijuana sales, and I looked at the numbers, it looked like about $13 million, given the current establishments, and even elevate that, our company alone would have been, is $70 million a year, and we're just one small drop in the bucket. We love this area, and we love being here, and there's a lot of other companies that might like that, except for the fact that we're getting a bad reputation, because this is something we're fostering and we're pushing forward. So I'm, I know that sounds very judgmental, but I'm just suggesting from an economic perspective, take a different look at this and attract businesses in that are bringing people, that are building the community, bringing a lot of tax dollars in, and maybe buying homes and things of that sort, and I think that's what we represent. The other side to that is we've got about 240 people, and we've seen a lot of washouts who, and I'm not making up the marijuana side, it's rampant, and, and there's other drug use as well, so it's not just that, but they come in, they last for a little bit, they're sluggish, they don't get the work done, they don't show up on time, they don't show up, and it's changing over, and that's very disappointing to us, because we really seek a lot of employees from the area. We're hoping that the schools produce some great employees. We're here now for quite some time, and we're pleased to be here, but we would have looked at it a lot differently. So again, from an economic perspective, and also from what you're doing to the community and for the community, I, we would love to see a great workforce that attracts a lot of other good companies in. In that case, we're probably competing for employees and paying more for them, but wouldn't you want a lot of great companies paying more for employees in this local area rather than less and less and less? We're here in Boeing Sierra for quite some time, as well as many other companies. I think what you want to see as you're planning is many, many more companies that will make it attractive to live and build and, and build a legacy in this area. So I appreciate your time and thank you for your community service. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jakes. Second is Kent Peverly. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kent Peverly, 312 Pec Stride. There's quite a few considerations to take into account on this issue, and I want to kind of summarize a little bit, some of those issues that come to my mind. There have been several articles since the first of the year, actually, related to health and the marijuana issue, and these are just some cursory items here. One was a report about increased, the increased potency of the products that are available now, and that came through a study with biological psychiatry. There was also a report recently from the Providence St. Peters Hospital in Olympia about the increased numbers of psychotic episodes in people making, smoking hash oil, and of course, that's going to affect the personnel that are available. I believe it was that article that pointed out that a number of these people are people who have never had any history of mental illness, and the surprising point to them was that, that these were people that were middle-income, young professionals, working for companies like Amazon and Microsoft, who just all of a sudden had a real problem, lost their job, created a real problem for the family. Another article confirming that was an article in MyNorthwest.com news confirming locally here, marijuana-induced psychosis being on the upswing. There was also a report from CBS just a few days ago about the increased number of visits to emergency wards, where marijuana is being identified as one of the causes for their having to make a visit. There was also an increase, or a report in The Times from the first of the month, it was actually a Washington Post writer commenting on research in one of the medical journals about how medical, heavy marijuana use can damage short-term memory. So all of these are factors that are affecting our workforce. We also have societal effects, and you're going to be, I believe, considering under agenda three, a zoning request that, that deals with the homelessness issue, how to address that, and it's been considered for a long time, dating from the time I was in the Army, where this was a problem, that marijuana use was an entry drug into other addictions, not by any far, by any means the only contributing factor to homelessness, but one of several that need to be taken into consideration. Was also a report recently about safety of the products. Pesticide residues are not being adequately tested in the state of Washington, and the article was also in The Times, the New York, Seattle Times, excuse me, and it referred also to improper labeling of the potency, that is not being reflective of exactly what the potency of some of the products are. It pointed out that in the state of Colorado, they're actually recalling products when they find deficiencies regarding pesticide residues. State of Washington is not doing that and doesn't have any testing in place to control that. We also have the issue of incomplete control of products. An Associated Press report from the end of January was relating to the fact that drug traffickers are secretly shipping mass quantities of weed out of Colorado, and I don't think they're referring to dandelions or Canadian thistle in that headline. The liquor control, or liquor cannabis board weekly report from February 26th shows that in the state of Washington, there are 598 producer-processor licenses that are issued and inspected, in other words, assumed to be online. Forty-one producers individually, and then 66 processors also licensed and issued and inspected, but there's only 210 retail stores reporting any sales. Now, there's no facts to back this up, but that's an awful lot of production in place for only 210 retail stores. Where's the rest of it going? Another report that drew my attention lately was, and this was actually in the HeraldNet, quoting from Bloomberg in the end of December, "The energy demands of the industry," that pot-growing operations are taxing the U.S. energy grid. And in that report, they were talking about how all of the conservation efforts that are being made in this country in certain localities are being overridden by the extra demand of the marijuana-growing industry. Now, let's put that in context of our local situation. It's already been pointed out that we have a store right across the street from Walmart, just outside the city limits by probably 20 feet, that in reality is a store in the city of Everett. It can't possibly be assumed that nobody from Everett goes there to buy, since it's the southernmost store within the city, or in the area of the city of Everett. So that really means we're harboring six stores once this additional one gets opened. So I'd just like to point out that Everett already has more than its share of retail stores for the area. The population of Everett is 14.4% of the Snohomish County population, but we presently have 21.7% of the retail capacity, and if you count that store across the street from Walmart, it's already 26% of the retail capacity for this area. So those are just some of the facts. So those are just some of the facts I'd like to point out that, that there needs to be a limit placed at this point, I believe. And I would urge you to consider not allowing any additional stores at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Peverly. Next is Diane Brooks.
Hi, I'm Diane Brooks, 1406 Wentmore. The state's interest in adding more marijuana dispensaries in Everett is to mitigate the impacts of its expected forced closures next July of other medicinal marijuana pharmacies in this area. The state, to its credit, is concerned that residents with severe pain conditions, cancer, multiple sclerosis, epilepsy, and other debilitating conditions and illnesses continue to have access to their medications. Rick Garza, Director of the State Liquor and Control Board, has said, "Our goal was clear, to ensure medical patients have access to the products they need." I was surprised at last month's city council hearing on this issue by how very little focus was placed upon medicinal marijuana users and the needs of our city's residents to have convenient access to this precious resource. Instead, I heard an unrealistic fear that these businesses, which are highly regulated and professionally operated, might pose a threat to public safety. It makes me suspect that some city officials lack a realistic image of who uses marijuana, either recreationally or medicinally. I am a typical customer, purchasing meds for my husband. He has terminal bone cancer and has had a medicinal marijuana prescription written by a Bastea University professor based in Monroe for three years. I've become an expert on this topic out of necessity. Hard liquor, nicotine, and prescription narcotics already are on sale at every grocery store and pharmacy in this city. Many experts consider marijuana to be a safer substance than any of these. These are two of many articles about studies and statistics on the matter. I thought I only had three minutes, so I cut a lot of out. But this Washington Post story, "Stone Drivers Are A Lot Safer Than Drunk Ones," new federal data show. There was a study that came out a few months ago that was astonishing in what it found about how safe stone drivers are compared to drunk drivers. And then there's a study with statistical data about in Colorado. After one year of retail recreational sales, Colorado had a drop in property crime, a drop in violent crime, and a drop in traffic fatalities. So it's hard to believe that marijuana, increased access to marijuana was a public safety issue in the state of Colorado so far anyway. Sorry, that was an aside, I wasn't, I wasn't planning on going there. Because of Everett's previous moratorium on medicinal marijuana pharmacies, we've had to travel to dispensaries outside of the city from the start. I now have to drive to a shop on 112th Street in a residential area south of the mall to buy my husband's meds. It's typically a one-hour round trip errant. When my husband's pain soars, he doesn't want to double his morphine. So instead, he can ingest pain-killing marijuana strains like Cookies and Cream and Orange Crush. When he can't sleep, instead of using narcotic sleep aids, he ingests strains like Beast Mode and Grand Daddy Purple. When he's nauseous, we turn to Purple Arrow. When he's depressed, there's Harlequin and Cheesecake. Do you know what CBD is? It's a non-stony medicinal component of marijuana. It's been a miracle for many children with epilepsy. Generally speaking, it's only available in the medicinal pharmacies. Now, at the city council meeting, a woman said, "Oh, we have CBD at our shop." And yes, she has one or two products, but the medicinal pharmacies have like 20 products, and they cost significantly less than they do in the medicinal pharmacies. I'm quite dismayed that the state's closing down the medicinal pharmacies because many of them are, are co-ops and are being operated for the benefit, humanitarian benefit of the patients, not for retail profit. So the notion of the recreational stores beginning to stock some medicinal stuff from the side is not going to help people who depend on the medical marijuana at an affordable price. Recreational shops have little market for meds that don't create a high of any sort. The medicinal shops sell CBD smokeables, pills, drinks, and candies. These products are crucial for professionals like my husband who need a clear head to go to work. If our current pharmacy in 112th Street is among the shops targeted for closure this summer, I may have to drive to Seattle for these products. Please help provide a safe and dependable source for medicinal relief for your residents who need it. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. And next to speak is Alan Poehl.
Evening, Alan Poehl, 136 Magnolia Avenue. Testified here before. I do, I do appreciate what the other people have said hitherto on both sides of the issues, but I am going to have to say that it has been pointed out, we've, I think Everett has done its share with accommodating marijuana sales, and I would really like to see no more for, for any of a number of reasons. I want to first of all echo what the gentleman said from Electric Mirror Company. You were trying to attract or provide an environment here that's going to attract businesses and a, and a culture and so forth. It's going to, to be providing skilled workers for businesses such as Electric Mirror. And when you have a pervasiveness of marijuana, and I'm, I'm going to have to distinguish a little bit now between recreational versus the medical uses, which we just had a pretty eloquent and I think a pretty good testimony on. When you separate those two and look at the recreational aspects, you're creating a culture here that is not going to attract businesses like Electric Mirror or Boeing or Spirit Aviation or any of these other vendors. You're, you're, you're taking this economic wagon and you're hooking up horses to the opposite end. On the one hand, trying to say that Everett's a good place to, to own homes and family-oriented and so forth, and then, and then to provide this culture. The, the reality is, I think the elephant in the room, a lot of people are not going to probably like this, but I think it needs to be said anyway. When marijuana was legalized, there's always been a problem with homeless people in this area. I've, I've lived here since 1987. There's always been a few homeless people around. It took a step function upon the legalization of marijuana. They flocked, the drug people flocked to Everett and they, to, to, to Washington and to Colorado because these are the two meccas. These are the two places where you can, where it's accepted. You can get away with it, even what laws they have are not going to be as vigorously enforced. And in all fairness to the people who have the legitimate businesses, or I would say the ones that are state legal, if not federal legal, I, I will agree, they're not the source of the problem. The people that go in there can afford to pay the prices they charge, that's not the problem. It's the whole culture that surrounds it. I think what we need to do is think about keeping the lid on this and not allowing it to pervade anymore. I, I think in terms of the medical, I can't agree more with, with some of the testimony I heard. The drug needs to be re-categorized at the federal level. It's at a very restricted level right now where research cannot be done, that should be done to get the proper extracts and provide these in, in a way that's available to people like this, like this lady's husband. But I don't think the legalization and the proliferation of these, these stores is going to be the answer. That maybe farther down the line that might be, but not right now. And whatever they're doing, I would like to say, to, to see that separate from the pharmaceutical behemoth industry. But that's, that's a whole nother discussion that's beyond our level down here. That's way above our pay grade. But anyway, a couple of quick comments. The number $13 million has been thrown around, that might be gross sales. And I'm contrasting that for Everett with what the mayor of Snohomish said recently. She took whatever number that they came up with, put it in a pot and boiled it down for the amount of money, revenue that would actually be netted for the city of Snohomish if they would legalize marijuana sales. It came out to something like $30,000, okay? And that's not even going to pay a fraction of what one social worker is going to have to be paid to address additional problems that additional legalization is going to, to bring into the area. So be very careful with those numbers. Take the $13 million and, and work it like, like she did and see what actual benefit's going to come. A rather crass way to put that would be to say, "Numbers don't lie." I'm an engineer, I can testify that for a fact. But liars use numbers. Be careful with whatever numbers you quote about whatever economic benefit's going to, going to come to our community. And so I would, just in closing, I think my time's about up. We have five stores that are now vested. Keep the lid on those, if you will. Please don't allow any more. Maybe those will atrophy and eventually go away. But for the long term, please, no more, at least not in the areas that we have defined. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Poehl. Is there anyone else in the audience that'd like to address the Planning Commission on this item? Seeing none, do I hear a motion to close the public testimony?
So move.
Second. Need a second from voting.
Yes, please.
A second. Sorry.
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Chair Holland?
Yes.
Well, staff has provided us with a resolution with three potential alternatives. Let's open up the discussion between the commissioners.
I'm gonna, I would move no action. I think we've dealt with this. And the bottom line is, is I think if you look at the map and you look at the land use regulations that are already in place, it's already limited. I don't think very many more can fit into the, the city in terms of the buffers that you have to allow for distances and things of that nature. And the bottom line is the voters have spoken on this issue. It is legal. And it's a market. So in my opinion, we've kind of dealt with this already, and I would say no action. That's, that's my recommendation.
I, I would like to echo that sentiment as well, for all the reasons stated above.
Question, question. Did you say no action or no additional retail stores?
I said, no action, meaning we just let the, the regulations that are in place now dealing with marijuana continue to play out. I think what you're going to find is you don't even make it to 10 stores based on buffers and things of that nature. But given the land use regulations already in place, whether or not marijuana is, you know, all the issues that people are debating here, it's been debated. It's been voted on. And at this point, I think that it is legal, and we have put regulations in place to protect the safety, health, and welfare of the public. We've dealt with it and to be okay with what has already been done.
So I think this is a really hard issue, and I think it's really complicated because there's so many moving parts to it, right? You have the, the medical side of things, you have the retail side of things. I'm concerned about the perception issue. I, I think that the speakers spoke to it. I think when I've talked to people around the community, when they drive up and down Evergreen Way, the signage that is out, I don't know that it's appropriate, given the type of perception that we want to convey as a community. To some degree, I wish the, the moratorium had passed because I feel like it would have given us a more adequate opportunity to have a conversation without just dealing with numbers on limitations, but actually talk about signage and impacts and talk about how medical plays into this rather than have just one public hearing that, that plays out. Commissioner Beck, I, I think you're right in terms of the reality of the impact. If, if we take no action, it's probably pretty limited. At the same time, I, I wouldn't mind a pause. And I wish the, the moratorium had, had allowed us to do that. And from my perspective, the, you know, whether we have five or whether we have 10, what I would prefer at this point is to have a broader conversation about how this essentially pilot study has occurred in our community and, and the impacts. So I think at this point, I would support that we put a limitation in place, but at the same time, I'm not opposed to more stores in our community. I guess I'm opposed to the perception that it's creating in our community at this point, and I'd like to have a broader conversation about that.
Yeah, you mentioned signage and all that, and that, which is just a difficult thing, even if that was brought back to the forefront of me, because you cannot limit the content of a sign. So it would be very difficult or it would be illegal to, you know, because you see them up on the billboards now everywhere, and I mean, very noticeable. You know, they, just the, the generally the signage that is required for their, you know, their retail store is the same as any other retail outlet, but the, on the billboards and things like that, unless it's obscene or anything like that, then it, you know, you, you couldn't, you couldn't cap the content on that, so.
Is there an option to, for the Planning Commission to make a recommendation to the city council that the council enact an emergency ordinance? That be our recommendation? Or if they don't have the conviction to do that, then do, take no action? Could that be a recommendation?
As I was saying earlier, and based on my conversation with the city attorney, you can make a recommendation other than the three alternatives that we have identified, and so, yes, you can do that.
I mean, I think Commissioner Adams' comment about allowing for the further discussion is really important. And that would be the way to do it, is if they pass an emergency ordinance, that would give time for the conversation to take place. But if there isn't the number of votes in the council to do that, you know, maybe they would do it now. Maybe the additional votes will come forward now that weren't there before. But lacking that, then I think would be, the no-action alternative would be the, the next preferable action.
However, didn't they not do that in terms of the emergency ordinance? I mean, isn't that what they were voting on previously, is a moratorium to stop? I mean, I, I'm trying to figure out what the difference would be.
Well, I think the emergency clause ordinance gives, there has to be a review of it. And it allows time for that review to take place without the pressure of, of a very tight deadline.
We failed to have five votes to pass an emergency ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, I-
We failed to pass it, and it did not pass.
Right, and I read the minutes because they actually had the very discussion that you're talking about. And council decided, no. I mean, it, it had to have a supermajority, how do you?
Right. Five votes were required and it got four.
So, again, I think that it's unfortunate that we can't kind of play out all the buffers and everything like that. I think what we're going to find is that these stores are already pretty limited based on the parameters that are already within the existing ordinance. And, you know, we can talk about perceptions, but there, it hasn't stopped the economic growth that's going on in this region. I keep hearing about how it's going up and up. I keep hearing about companies that are locating to Everett. I forget, we just had a big boon recently in the past few months. The mayor, I, I can't remember what the company is. But I think that we've dealt with this. This is the point that I'm trying to make, is that we spend a lot of time dealing with this. And, you know, it kind of seems to me it's time to move on thinking about what's going to make the community better instead of focusing on things that we're fearful of or worried about.
And if I may just kind of follow up on that, for perception, I mean, I, Everett's an amazing city, and I want everyone to know about that. And, but when we look about and talk about perceptions, I think that the real cleave comes, and I look out here as, I think, one of the few people who is below the age of 30. Everyone behind me who's expressed concerns about perception is older than I am. My peers from my generation, I mean, yeah, we've seen some, you know, signs that are kind of a little tacky, but that's a billboard for you. When, when I think about a city, when I think about my peers and how they approach what places to live, places where they want to start businesses, places to go, they look at amenities, and a lot of people in my generation consider access, access to marijuana as amenity, as it would be a restaurant, as it would be a bar, as it would be any sort of thing, social activity. And there is not as much of a stigma amongst, I know my peers for marijuana. It's just, I don't associate it with, in, I don't have a negative association with it. So I, I think as we look forward and are looking ahead for the future of Everett, you know, when we want to attract people who are, you know, young, young workers, young employees, young people who want to do startups and attract those younger employees, you know, we need to have space for all amenities to exist. And, yeah.
I do, I want to make one comment on this too, because this lady, I apologize, I forgot your name. But access is a really important thing that she brought up. I mean, there are medicinal benefits to this drug that we're talking about. And I think that the access issue for the people who are using it, and more and more people are using it. My family, we're personally looking at it. We're hoping that medicinal marijuana is legalized in Georgia at some point. I have a nephew who's epileptic, and we've been watching the research, and it is phenomenal. Unfortunately, it's not. So in a state that it is, I think trying to provide as much access to those people who are using it for medicinal purposes is really important.
I, I guess the question I have is, say the number went from five to 10. How would we be assured that those new 10 stores, or even the existing five, would have the kind of products that Mrs. Brooks is talking about needing for her husband? I mean, do we have any assurance that they're, they would be obligated to have the full range of, of product available? If we were to open up that door? And I have to say, I mean, I'm the old guy on the council, I have a different perspective. I've never used it. I don't, I hope I never have to use it, but I may be on the same track as Mrs. Brooks' husband. I just don't see that there's a strong community benefit, benefit to having more stores around here than we have right now. Unless there's a way to make sure that any additional stores provide the medical product that we heard about tonight.
And in answer to your question, I do not know the answer, whether or not a recreational store would be required to provide access for medical marijuana. I know that they are able to apply and, and get approval from the liquor and cannabis board to provide it, but whether or not they're mandated, I do not believe that is the case, but I'm not positive.
Yeah, one would have to assume that in order to open up their market for their retail sales, they would probably apply for, you know, both medical and recreational. But you're right, there's no assurances of that. Commissioner Zelinski?
Well, my position normally would be not to attempt to fiddle with regulations that we've just put in place recently. So my sort of philosophical leaning is towards no action. However, I was somewhat swayed by Mr. Gibson's mention of the fact that the city hasn't had no medical marijuana dispensaries. So we're basically going from a situation as a city of having zero marijuana outlets to now having five. So given that situation and the, given the fact that we're all sort of feeling our way into this new world of legalized marijuana, I'm inclined to support a limit of five for a fixed period, put a sunset on it of maybe two years and revisit. Let's, let's let the city figure out how we work with five retail establishments, going from zero to five. Give a couple of years for the dust to settle on this, see what the law enforcement implications are, if any. How the medical and the recreational end up coming together at the state level. And what the market is for marijuana, who knows? Maybe the market will shake down some of these five and, in a couple of years, we'll be down to three. Who knows? But because of this situation, I'm inclined to support putting a limit of five in place for two years.
Five additional or five?
No, the five that we have now.
Alternative number two.
Alternative two, yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
I would speak to alternative two as well. I've spent more time on this than any other issue that we've had before. I've spent time with the liquor control board, liquor and cannabis control board. I've spoken to two different individuals there. On the, they will, the, the current folks will apply for a license and go through a process. So then, I used Uber to participate, visiting four of the stores, because the last thing I wanted was my car license plate to be seen on the front of it. And I went in, you know, and they're pretty pleasant inside and people are nice and, you know, they're just a business. And remember, I come from economic development, that's in my blood and always has been. It's really hard to say that I would support limiting something. But I think when you talk to the folks in the stores, the, I wish some of them or one of them was here today, because they all have capacity to grow within their current framework, number one. So as the market grows, it's not like no one's not gonna have any place. Three of the ones I visited are very interested in the medical side, both, there's a couple, both in the north and the south end of town. And I, I still don't think we know enough about, not whether it causes you to go on to other drugs, or just the, the whole business. This is, this is a whole new industry that we're, we're talking about here. And so then my economic juices kicked in when I got my own car and said, let's go talk to some of those folks. And you go out and talk to the Everett Mall folks, and not to theirs liking or disliking, and this is same with me. It's not whether I like it or dislike it, that's not my job here nor anybody else's. But when you look at some of the national companies in their, in their property locations department, and so I called a couple of those property locations department, and it is something that in Colorado and the state of Washington, they're looking at. And we could limit, limit ourselves and we could say, oh yeah, that'll never happen. Let's go back 12 years ago when Budweiser distributor in Everett came to us, the community, the economic development and the business community, and said, you guys gotta help us. They want to locate a hazardous waste collection site across from our store. And if they do that, we fall out of the guidelines of our Budweiser corporate distributorship. And we lost that, we lost that distributor and they're now in Smoky Point. So it isn't as if what these property managers say could happen, would happen. I think when you also combine it with the testimonies tonight on, on the economic side, it, it, there are those perceptions. I, I disagree with you, Alex, not to disagree, but I disagree that it's an age deal. Because I have a bunch of 30-year-old friends and I got a bunch of 60-year-old friends. And it's just like alcohol, some of them drink, some of them don't, some smoke, some of them don't. We're still, you know, so it, 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 I, I, I just, for that reason, I, I really like what Michael said. I had circled two before I got here, and I, I really think that adding some sort of 24-month additional time to that. So we really make sure that we are creating a new Everett that's vibrant and attracts young and old. And attracts, you know, we've got this new college down at the other end of town, which will create more colleges in the future or more students to want to locate here. So I, I just, this is really hard for me personally, because I'm normally, I'm a normally, let's go get it and let's show everybody else. And I don't know that I want to represent the citizens of Everett that way. And, you know, you also need to, another person I talked to was at the Washington State Patrol, was able to get into the blood, the BAC, which is the, the testing method for driving. And it's still, I, I gotta read this and I'm going to forward them, they probably are already gonna talk to me or tell me that they've seen that. But that all, as well as being developed, so we really don't know the effects. And again, I look at that as, as, as alcohol, it's there, prescription drugs are there. And it's the, the user error that causes them to get in their vehicles and drive. So it's, it's really about the image, the perspective. Let's give it 24 months. If we go back and look at what we've already done, it was, let's see and at some time, let's expand. The money side of it, what, what we get out of it, we, a city, is so meniscal, it's, it's not even worth measuring. I mean, I think based off of the 13 million, we get $70,000 or something like that. I mean, those numbers don't even equate to, you know, any, so that, that's, that's my, my hope, is that we can come to agreement on some sort of agreement around number two, and let's, let's limit them, let's let the market do, there's capacity there. We still don't know about the medic, they don't know, the liquor control board. And, and I said, I could repeat this, and they said, well, which newspaper? But they don't know, because the medical, as the, the Ms. Brooks said earlier, the medical side isn't regulated the way that the recreational side is. So the products that are in the current medical stores might not be the same products that are in the new model, as the legislature's done by combining the stores. So we don't, we don't know what we're talking about when we talk about that medical side, so.
Sounds like a motion.
Wait, wait.
I don't know.
I do want to say one thing.
Not the motion.
Just real quick, like, because I think it's an important point to make in terms of limiting the number of stores. So right now, we have no medicinal dispensaries in Everett. And by taking this motion, you eliminate medical dispensaries from Everett, because what's happening, nope, hold on. I understand these recreational stores and their square footage. They make more money recreational than they do medicinal. So if there's an opportunity for someone who does want to focus on the medicinal side to come in and create the varieties that this woman is talking about, you're eliminating it and you're basically creating a great market for five people. You're picking winners by doing this. So I think that the limit is a bad idea, because I think that there is a dispensary out there that does want to focus on medicinal. And they'll come into this city, and those are the people that they're gonna target, and they'll do it under the new licensing. So I just really want to make that point, because by limiting it, I think what's gonna happen is you're gonna have all recreational marijuana in this city. Whereas you might have the opportunity to have medicinal, if we had other, so.
Kathy, the medicinal is going away, so the, the rec guys are gonna have to, or the municipal, municipal. The medical people are gonna have to adhere to the new rules and regulations, which are totally different than what they're operating now. And they clearly said some of what they can buy now might not be available in the future. So there, the stores are, will be ran under the same guidelines. There is no more medical and recreational, they're, they've combined them into one. And so you can have both licenses, but the license of the medical is significantly different to the medical stores we see today. I mean, they use, he used the words night and day. I don't know what night and day means.
So what I'm trying to understand is, I'm hearing from the medicinal side, there are certain varieties that work better, depending on what the ailment is. And, I mean, so I guess what I'm looking at is if you have floor space, you're gonna target what makes the most dollar for your floor space. That's gonna be recreational, guaranteed. So however, there is someone out there potentially that wants to provide for medicinal, because they see it as an opportunity, because the other guys aren't gonna do it. And I think by limiting the number of stores in the city, I think what you're gonna find is that you're gonna have mostly recreational. There's not gonna be the varieties there in terms of the product for people to choose from and what their needs are from a medicinal perspective. So that's, that's what you're gonna create when you say we're gonna limit them. We're already limiting them through the regulations that we've created as part of the land use regulations. So that, that's the only thing. I mean, I understand that I might be in the minority here, but I think that we already have land use regulations in place that have addressed this. We just did these regulations three months ago. And I would say no action is the best course to pursue.
Alan, quick question for you. So I, I had asked you previously about whether police had an opinion or had any analysis regarding, you know, any uptake in crime or loitering or solicitation around or near the existing recreational facilities? And, and your answer was, was no, they, they didn't have any hard facts on that. But was that part of the work program that was contemplated with the moratorium?
Yes, under the emergency ordinance that failed at city council a few weeks ago. That was part of the work plan, was to have the police help us with some crime analysis, crime data and statistical analysis.
So if the planning commission were so inclined for alternative two with the two-year sunset, within that time to actually go out and maybe do some of that analysis, could that also be a potential recommendation for council to consider?
Sure.
Thank you. Commissioner Don, I believe you had a-
Yeah, I had a couple of comments. By limiting the number of stores, you're gonna basically be creating a monopoly. So the more that we move above ground, the less underground sales we have. So there's already, there are underage people getting their hands on marijuana. There's people buying it who shouldn't, there's illegal activity. But the, the more access we have to the legal market, we get that revenue and we get control over it. The, the marijuana industry is highly regulated, it's more regulated than Hanford. You've got Department of Health, Department of Ecology, Department of Ag, LNI. You've got, you know, all these state organizations keeping their eyes on this. And so we have data on the sales and the taxes. And this is an industry that pays 37% tax. So in Snohomish County alone, in just the month of, in, in 2016, there's been $38.2 million purchased. And the total tax from that is 15.8. So the $70,000 amount that you had was based on a projection that's been, that's way off. So that's in Snohomish County, $15.8 million in taxes. So that takes, that takes money from our schools and the different social programs that's, that benefit from having that tax revenue. So, and we need to make this decision based on facts. We know Department of, National Institute of Health said it's not a gateway drug. There's multiple benefits from it, but it needs to be based on facts and not just kind of sky is falling Nancy Reagan talking points. So if we're allowing more sales, you're bringing it above ground and you're keeping it out of youth hands. Because you went, when you went into the store, you can't get one foot into the door without showing your ID. So we know that there's strict regulation, and by limiting it, we, we're creating monopoly. And I usually, I try to think of it the same way as like high-grain alcohol. We don't have limitations on number of stores that can sell it, where, you know, how close they can be to each other, what type of alcohol a store can sell. You know, and, so that to me, alcohol and advertising for alcohol, those are all happening. And those bring out, you know, those have a lot of health impacts, caffeine, stuff like that. So I, if I could vote, I would suggest no action.
Going, going off that, just to give some numbers to the notion of what happens in the illicit, the illicit market. The study that was attached, we saw the best estimates, they, they say is that $390 million are lost in the illicit market for marijuana. I mean, creating barriers to access marijuana, more or less ensures that, that $390 million remains in the illicit market. And doesn't, we don't get an opportunity to collect revenue from that. And without that revenue, we don't get to address issues that would really impact and make our workforce more competitive. Because arguably, I, I want us, Everett has a lot of wonderful, amazing people, and we want to give them the tools to be the best workforce. But it's, you know, marijuana isn't the cause for somebody showing up late to work, it's just the symptom. I, connecting, connecting somebody with the tools they need to empower themselves, to be a better employee, be a better citizen, that requires money, that requires nonprofit and government work. And we need funds to do that, and this is an opportunity to, to collect those funds, to get the tools we need to develop our workforce too. So I feel like we're leaving money on the table.
Commissioner Sands?
I'd like to make a motion.
I think, did you have a comment first, Commissioner Zelinski here?
Well, just in response to some of the commissioners' recent comments, I agree we should base our recommendation on facts. But for me, the compelling fact is that we're going, as a city, we are going from zero marijuana retail outlets a year ago to five today. To me, that's the compelling fact. Monopolies are created by the state, they're limiting the number to 10. So what we're arguing about now is what the appropriate point is, is it five or 10, or seven, or some other number. I say going from zero to five, let's see how this works for two years and then revisit it in two years.
Commissioner Sam?
I make a motion to adopt the draft resolution provided, a resolution concerning a limit on the number of retail marijuana stores in the city of Everett. I suggest the motion would be alternate number two, no additional retail marijuana stores, with the condition that the issue be- with the condition that the issue be revisited in 24 months.
I would second that motion.
Is it within my ability to amend that motion, or?
Any, any discussion, there's, there's a motion on there, but if you'd like to have any discussion before the call for the vote, you're welcome to do so.
Yes, I, I would love just, it's, it's clear there's kind of, there's a bit of a, maybe there's maybe more room for a bit more consensus. I think it is important to address accessibility for medical marijuana. I think that's something that needs to be done. I don't know if, right now, currently, there's the, the space in the market or the market incentives to do that. I think that's, Commissioner Beck made a very compelling argument. Perhaps moving, instead of, instead of laying the 10, and instead of keep, instead of keeping the five, we split the difference and choose a seven or an eight to allow for that additional growth, but not an unrelenting amount of growth that would be more than we could want to, more than we want to accommodate at the time, might be the middle ground that would allow to address the most concerns in the best way possible.
Any additional comments on the motion?
Well, one point in that is that, keep in mind, we're making a recommendation to the council, and they get to decide, you know. So we could put in zero or 24, 24, and they, they're going to decide. But they're looking for us from, for a recommendation from a perspective of the planning commission. I think that's what we're trying to do. If there was some assurance that going from five to six would mean that the sixth store would be for medical purposes, that'd be great. I think that'd add a different perspective to the discussion. But we don't have that assurance, we don't have a way for that to happen. And maybe within the 24-month period, there's a way to figure all that out.
And I understand where you guys are coming from, and, and I'm not going to support it, but I understand it. And I think what we've done is given the council a lot of good things to think about. I mean, so I think we've served our purpose in terms of, you know, where we're going to end up. But I don't agree, and that's just how it is.
Any additional comments on the motion?
Yeah, I, I would say the same, and I'd put that into my, you know, if you limit it, you add two or three, recommendation three, I think it is, where you, somewhere between five and 10. That person that gets the one medical, you know, you want to talk about a cash cow, you have the one medical store in Everett. Or if we go to seven, you have the second one. Again, what I understood from talking to the Liquor Control and Cannabis Board today, the recreational stores will get it first, the opportunity first to, to do that and incorporate it into their business. So that's why I think, again, why I pushed towards leaving it at five, and let's, let's, let's see where it goes. Because it's, the numbers I used were the Everett numbers, Megan, not the county numbers. So that's why there was a differential in the, in the numbers.
I believe all five recreational sort of have a flyer, and I know a couple of us, at least three of us have received them.
Unfortunately, the public testimony's been closed on this, so thank you. Any additional comments on the motion? Okay, call for vote.
Commissioner Lark? Commissioner Zelinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
No.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Chair Holland?
Yes.
No, it's like you said, it's a conversation.
Thank you, commissioners. So we'll move on to agenda item number two, which is Choice Neighborhoods.
Our second item on the agenda is to talk about a planning process that seems, is evolving a little bit from what we were expecting when we had adopted the comprehensive plan or recommended the comprehensive plan. You may recall that we were looking at, doing some land use planning around the college area at the north end of the city, when we were talking about certain areas to spend a little bit more time and focus on when we were working on the comprehensive plan. And it turns out that as we were contemplating that, that the Everett Housing Authority brought to our attention the opportunity to apply for a grant from HUD, a Choice Neighborhoods grant, that if successful, would provide up to half a million dollars for a planning process around transforming the neighborhood in the vicinity of the colleges and the Housing Authority property. And I'll, I'll show you some maps in a moment. But what we have decided in talking with the Housing Authority and the colleges and Mayor's Office was to, instead of having two separate processes ongoing, one that relates to Housing Authority property and another that relates to colleges in close proximity, that we should try to combine planning processes so that we're dealing with, in one planning process, a number of issues that relate to this same area. And so wanted to talk a little bit about the, how we anticipate that planning process progressing here, whether we are successful in pursuing this Choice Neighborhoods grant or not. Rick Doris from the Housing Authority is in the audience tonight, and he may want to offer some comments as well. But we did decide to apply for this grant with the Housing Authority, and we'll learn whether or not we get this in the spring. The HUD Choice Neighborhoods grant has a goal for transforming a neighborhood positively. And it's came to the Housing Authority's attention specifically because of the condition of the housing in the Baker Heights neighborhood, where they can no longer get HUD funds to renovate, continually renovate the, the housing at the Baker Heights, just because the cost to, to do so is so high that it's not a good investment. HUD will not fund any additional more, excuse me, any more renovations for that property. And, and what the Housing Authority would like to do is to surplus that property, take the proceeds, and use it to acquire additional housing sites or additional vouchers for their tenants. The Housing Authority has held a public meeting up with the neighborhood, up in the Delta neighborhood there. And all of the Baker Heights tenants who would be displaced by this will receive replacement vouchers and will be able to relocate. The Housing Authority will do this over a period of about three years. And so nobody will be kicked out anytime soon or kicked out at all. They will have to be relocated with suitable replacement housing. But as part of that decision process for demolishing the Baker Heights property, then the Housing Authority needs to plan for the reuse of that property. And so the planning grant would provide a substantial amount of money to conduct a planning process. First of all, I'll show you the plan, or, excuse me, not the plan, but the, the boundary of the area that we were looking at, possible changes. And this we tried to keep fairly narrow, because we did not want to create change in the single-family neighborhoods. Most of the areas to the east and west of Broadway that are unshaded on this map are zoned for single-family use. The tan color, the buff color on the upper left side is part of Everett Community College and part of Woodyer Elementary School. The orange color is the commercial zoning that fronts on Broadway, including properties where, that are owned by Everett Community College and where Washington State University is being constructed. The Baker Heights neighborhood, using the cursor here, is located in the southeast portion of our planning area. And we put this on the map because we realized that there was going to be potential for change around the Baker Heights property. This is also Everett Housing Authority property, the 12 Pines, I believe it's called, Wiggums Hollow Park up here, City Island Park. This is Hawthorne Elementary School here. We have some more Housing Authority senior housing located adjacent to Hawthorne Elementary School. And so these are all areas that are zoned either multifamily or commercial or institutional overlay for the college. And those were the areas where we wanted to do some planning. At least this was our preliminary boundary for doing some planning around college growth and expansion needs, and, and of course, around the periphery there, minimizing impacts on the neighborhood. For the Housing Authority and their planning process through this Choice Neighborhoods grant, again, using the cursor, this is the Baker Heights neighborhood where the demolition will be occurring. They look to an area that has a somewhat different boundary, but some overlapping area. So for example, the Washington State University Everett Community College property is located in this area. They've used this boundary because of the demographics based upon household incomes and poverty and educational attainment and even crime stats that will score very favorably, or most favorably than other boundaries that could have been drawn. Several different boundaries were tried, but this being a very competitive grant process, the boundary was drawn in this fashion to create the best, the strongest application. But it includes a lot of the same properties that I just pointed out, the Hawthorne Elementary School and a number of other Housing Authority properties. The Denny Youth Center owned by Snohomish County up in this part of the neighborhood. And so there are also a number of other public and privately owned properties within the neighborhood here. So that is the boundary that was used for this grant application. And so how those relate to one another, this highly technical, highly skilled graphic map that made by the Planning Director here with this red line, tried to overlay, overlay the Choice Neighborhoods boundary on top of the Planning Department's college area planning boundary. And so you can see there's quite a bit, quite a bit of overlap there. And so with the two planning areas and one planning process, and I can't describe exactly how it's all going to unfold, but we're going to work with all of the stakeholders, including the colleges, including the Housing Authority, including the school district, including the county, including property owners and neighborhood groups in both sides of Broadway, as well as the business community. We wanted to conduct a planning process that will address not only the college growth needs, but also the transformation of the neighborhood, and especially the Baker Heights property after demolition, what is to become of that. We don't have the answers yet, the planning process is what will lead us to those answers. And so we did want to include a little bit of the information. It's a very voluminous application that was submitted to HUD. And so we've just included a small portion of the materials that have been submitted for that application. There is an executive summary and the section entitled "Soundness of Approach to the Planning Process" that has a bit of information of what we expect to occur in that planning process. But even if we are unsuccessful in pursuing that grant, the Housing Authority and the city still are committed to conducting a planning process. It will be probably less, it'll tackle less of the issues that would be required if we did get the HUD grant, but will still address college growth, Housing Authority properties, and neighborhood protection. And so the, the difference will be, instead of having $500,000 of federal money in the planning process, it'll all be local, locally funded, just through staff time and resources of both the Housing Authority and, and the city. We, I think what we will learn is in late spring, whether or not we get the grant, and after that, we will certainly have a better idea as to timing or how, how long it'll take. In the meantime, there's a lot of work that still needs to be done between the, the city and the Housing Authority to ramp up a planning process. There have been some discussions, in fact, the, the one meeting that I mentioned that the Housing Authority held, there were probably 200 people from the neighborhood who did show up for that. And they were mostly concerned about the fate of being relocated from Baker Heights rather than the planning process. I think that was touched on, but was not the key point of interest for the discussion that night. So I've mentioned some of the stakeholders that we'll be working with. It'll include the Economic Alliance, it'll also include Providence Hospital, but I haven't listed on this slide. But we will, as we get into this process, have some regular briefings for the Planning Commission and City Council. And when we get to key points, we'll be asking for feedback and direction to the, or from the Planning Commission. And of course, any land use changes or zoning changes that would come out of the planning process will have to be approved by the City Council following the review and recommendation by the Planning Commission. We expect approximately a three-year planning process if we're successful in obtaining the grant, and probably a year and a half to two if, if we are not. But at any rate, I think that's all I've, yeah, that's all I've got on the slide here, and want to just bring that to your attention. That's some work program that will be coming your way and, and, but before you, it'll probably be a little while before we bring anything of substance to the Planning Commission. We'll get ramped up in a public outreach process first, and that'll be shaped to a great extent also by whether or not we're successful in obtaining the grant. So if you have any questions, happy to try and answer those or any feedback for us. And you might open it up for comments. I know that Rick Doris is here from the Housing Authority, and he may have some things to mention that I didn't think of.
Any questions before opening up to comments?
This map on page three, Alan, it, if I heard you correctly, that this, that this change would not affect the residential area? And you alluded to this map might not be. But it appears that there's some residential on the east side, and then it says on my copy, East Marine View Drive. So will that residential portion be included?
Yes, it will be included in the planning process. This first map that I put on the screen, which is a little bit different than the one in your hand, is the one that the city first started with, because we didn't want to alarm single-family residents in the, single-family zones that we were contemplating.
Right.
Land use changes. We're not contemplating them, but the planning process, when we broaden it out to include the residential area through the Choice Neighborhoods Grant Program and Planning Exercise, could lead to changes, probably not so much for the single-family homes, but certainly for the Baker Heights property, and perhaps for some of the properties that are shaded in the commercial corridor here furning Broadway. But for the boundary here that was used for the grant, part of the decision process for identifying the boundary also happened to revolve around economic and demographic data that positioned this application a little bit better for a scoring in this very competitive funding process. So the composite of those two maps is the one that you had in your hand there, and, and so it'll blend to some extent, both maps, and probably by the time we're done, look at some areas even outside of these shaded areas, as we're talking about just land use planning and the other issues that come along with that, capital improvements, neighborhood transformation, economic development, and so forth.
Thank you.
Alan, has there been any discussions with HUD about how the city made fare in their application process, and any indication from, from them? Or is it just after you submit, it's just pretty much silent, so?
The city hasn't spoken with HUD. Perhaps Mr. Doris can talk a little bit more about that. I know that they've, they did the bulk of the work on the grant application and hired a grant writer who has experience with HUD and thought that this is a fairly strong application based application based on her experience with this grant program.
Great.
Has this neighborhood seen this?
The boundaries?
The monthly neighborhood meeting, that community?
Not the boundaries. Actually, I think what was shown at the neighborhood that I, meeting that I'd mentioned up at the Housing Authority's Baker Tower, or Baker View Tower, about a month or so ago, did use this boundary and did at least identify some of the issues that would be looked at in this planning process. But, yeah, so that, just a very brief presentation about the planning process as part of that bigger meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Stan?
Alan, although the main campus for the Community College would not be within this study area, it seems to me that that, the Community College has a really strong influence on this area, just as the WSU's intention is to expand. So, will that be kind of merged in the study even though it might not be in the boundary? And then, would ST3 station be kind of part of the consideration as well?
The Community College, what is located west of Broadway here that was excluded from that map, will be part of our planning process. For the HUD grant, they used a, again, based upon demographics, if you add in the neighborhood that includes areas west of Broadway, it actually changed the demographics to where it was a less compelling application for some of the HUD criteria. Our planning process will include all of the school district and all of the Community College and Washington State University properties and others as we get into this process.
Okay. Thank you.
With regards to the Everett Housing Authority and the demolition of the Baker Heights, is it? There was a question, there was a sentence in the executive summary, is committed to making sure that all their needs are met? And that means housing needs, correct? And that means they'll be getting a Section 8 voucher, correct?
May I ask Mr. Doris to respond?
I'm Rick Doris with the Everett Housing Authority, and the answer to that is yes. Part of the demolition activities is the current residents will receive what they call tenant protection vouchers, which is a form of a Section 8 voucher. And then, the Housing Authority is compelled through the URA, which is the Uniform Relocation Act, to be sure that all of these folks, housing needs are addressed, they get moved, they get settled into their new homes, and life goes on for them. So, they, as Alan indicated earlier, we're not dumping anybody. It's a long, drawn-out process.
And that'll be more or less their next domicile will be secured before their, before the demolition occurs, because currently right now, there's a lot of discrimination being faced by people who have Section 8 vouchers, and they're not being given access to rentals or rental space. And so, I just want to make sure that people who have a home, you know, and that's going to be demolished, will have a home before it's torn down.
I promise you they will. I won't tear any down with somebody living in them.
Will they be relocated in spaces in Everett?
Well, actually, they can go anywhere they want with a, with a tenant protection voucher. They could actually port out of the state and go to another state if they wanted to. So, they have a lot of leeway there, yeah.
Has there been an inventory of, is that type of housing available in the, I mean, your kids are in school in those areas and so, okay, you've addressed the money side of things, but is there a place that they can relocate and keep their kids in the same school and go to the same church and?
That's a lot of what the planning grant will give us, is it's a huge exercise in all of the, all of the stakeholders that will be involved in all of the committees. We'll shake out all of those numbers and we'll shake out the availability before we make any, any actions, you know, and then we come to the city or to the Planning Commission, we'll have all of those answers. This planning grant affords us the opportunity to have a half million dollars at our disposal to work in conjunction with the city to help facilitate finding all of those, those answers to those questions. And then, one thing that Alan didn't mention is part of the grant, this is a two-piece grant, and we went for both pieces. There's another $1.5 million for early activities. HUD feels like you can say all day long, we just gave somebody a half million dollar planning grant, but nothing's happening. So, if we get the second part of the grant for the early activities, we'll actually be spending a million and a half dollars on some physical attribute that helps the community. And right now, we've targeted, I think it's indicated here in one of the sheets, we're going to do a barrier-free walking park that connects Wiggums Hollow, the south part of Wiggums Hollow Park, to the new, the new safe neighborhood, safe routes for the school around Hawthorne. And what this leads into is a transformation grant. We spend maybe as much as two years in the planning, and then we put a transformation plan together, and we apply for the implementation grant, which is up to $30 million, which Seattle Housing Authority has received two of those. And the components that that $30 million needs to be spent on is three components, is education and housing and the community. And so, Hawthorne is the perfect school. It fits all the criteria, meets everything that HUD says that we need. We need an underperforming school that's continually unperforming for us. You know, we'll be spending funds to help that school, whatever it may be, and it'll be this planning council that the grant creates to help tell us what, what we need, the community. What does Hawthorne School need to help it? So, it's really, really exciting times. If we're lucky enough to get the big grant, then, then we're in really good shape. It'd be a whole new complexion on the North End.
One more. I got to understand this correctly. So, you said that no one would be moved out until there was housing available?
Right.
And then, I asked the question around where, where's the housing in that local community outside of this footprint? And did I hear you correctly that you said we don't know that yet?
Well, we'll, we will identify the bulk of that housing. You know, we currently have, through attrition with our Section 8 department, I think it's about 160 vouchers that are not, not used or they're turned back into the Housing Authority on a annual basis between 160 and 200. Those folks that have those tenant protection vouchers then become a priority for the, for the Section 8 vouchers. They would be, have a higher priority than someone that's just on the list until we house them. So, potentially, if we put 244 people with Section 8 vouchers, we won't, we won't flood the market like in one week. It's, this is going to take a couple of years to do. So, our, the Housing Authority's attrition rate with the use of Section 8 vouchers will probably keep up fairly closely, plus we are continually creating new, new units in our, in our process of acquisition rehab to help meet those needs as well. So, I think as, you know, the plan is, we haven't put the final touches on the plan because that's what the grant's for, is we feel like that we can meet those needs and we can put people in homes, get them, get them securely in, in a place that they're comfortable, that's, that's reasonable, reasonably equal to what they have now, and get them, get them in place and ready to go, and then that's, that's whenever we would start the demolition.
Again, I heard you, I just, part of what you hear about this homeless and that is this age group of children in school, the disruption of moving them from school to school and neighborhood to neighborhood has some effect on them.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that's what I was trying to get is, I heard what you said, the vouchers will be there, but we don't know if the housing will be there to keep them in the same school or the same church or the same friend and go to the same parks. Did I catch that?
We won't know that till we get through the planning process.
Okay.
Part of that planning process is sitting down with each family and finding out what their demographics are and what's, you know, are, do you need to stay in this area or, you know?
Right.
A lot of, you know, we have 101 one-bedroom units in Baker Heights, and most of those are filled up with near elderly. So, we, you know, but we do have a lot of, a lot of kiddos that go to, that go to Hawthorne School too, so.
Thank you.
Can you, if you do get the big grant, can you leverage that if there's a private sector interest? I mean, could you do it, whatever the planning is? And you started moving forward, I understand you already have a project that's targeted, but if you started doing some sort of redevelopment of the property and, I'm assuming you're going to be involved, but if there was a private interest that was wanting to develop with you, would the federal funds allow that?
Yes, the, that's, that's the whole reason for the implementation grant is it's seed money.
Okay.
Whenever, whenever the city and the Housing Authority is sitting here with a $30 million grant, the $21 million of it can be spent on housing. That's going to attract some developers, and it's going to bring some partners to the table that are going to be willing to, so, and, and we'll also leverage that, use that money to leverage 4% and 9% tax credit properties from the State Housing Finance Commission. So, you know, it's just, it really gives us a foot up to be able to make some drastic transitions in, in the area and address, you know, unfortunately, Baker Heights has reached the end of its useful life, and it's not a viable property as far as HUD's concerned by their definition. It's still safe and sanitary and decent housing, it's just that the cost to repair it has exceeded the cost to replace at a percentage the HUD will allow us to spend on it as far as capital improvements.
So, part of this planning process could also be to look at, look at incentives to attract even more private capital into the redevelopment of the property?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the whole reason for the planning grant, is to find out what all those avenues are and who those people can be. And we have written commitments from most of the major, major stakeholders in the North End, you know, the colleges, hospitals, employers. So, we're, you know, we've got, we've got some really good buy-in as far as, as the community goes at this point.
Is there anybody in the audience that wants to address the commission on this topic this evening? Seen none. Any additional questions? Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to also thank Rick and the Housing Authority for sending him tonight and making a more complete presentation.
Thank you, Alan.
Thank you.
Well, it looks like we're on to item number three, code amendment proposal for supportive housing.
And Becky, if you want to, yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm pleased to be here for my first time tonight, so. You have before you a request from staff to consider initiating a code amendment to the zoning code that would put the supportive housing use in the use table and along with that, some provisions for that particular type of use. This is a direct response to the Community Streets Initiative, as you might, some of you might have been following the mayor's goals related to low-barrier housing. Some of that was in scattered sites, which were with some of his earlier goals, and along with that, a capital project that would actually build a facility that would be, you know, you could have secure entrance that would house a lot more of particularly the homeless, the chronically homeless. Supportive housing is a permanent housing, and it's, it's under a different model than, say, the traditional housing for homeless or for low-income in that traditionally, it would require that a person be ready for housing and that they would have to be sober, they would have clean and sober, they would have to meet certain requirements to actually get into some permanent housing, where the housing-first model is sort of the opposite of that, which is get the chronically homeless into their housing, get them stable, and then offer them the services that they can need. And it has found that they're better able to make decisions about their own health and life when they are in a stable environment. So, currently, the city's code does not have a, a use in the use tables for this, and the reason that it might be different than a traditional multifamily would be, for example, the parking requirements wouldn't be similar to what you would have in a traditional multifamily. Particularly, a lot of the chronically homeless don't have, most of them don't have vehicles. So, that parking requirement isn't there. The other things that might be addressed in a code amendment would be in what zones they would be allowed, what kind of a permitting process that they would go through. And I think the other important thing to consider in a code amendment would be kind of dictating how the facility should be managed in a neighborhood. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and again, we're asking for you to consider or giving staff direction to initiate this code amendment.
Thank you. Any, go ahead, Commissioner Stan?
Becky, I, one thing that wasn't on the list was proximity to supportive services, and I would think that'd be a key element of the consideration somehow, so.
We have discussed that internally, so that, yes, that's a good, and to transit.
Transit.
See, do you need a movement in order to?
Well, prior to doing that, maybe there's somebody in the audience that wants to address the commission on this topic, so. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to?
Go for it. Get it done.
Seen none. Commissioner Tithin?
Have you, have, have you had discussions with Spokane's Planning Department? I know that they've got a couple hundred of these types of housing, and you're shaking your head.
We have not spoken with the Planning Department, per se. I have done some code and that research to see who has codes. There's not very many out there right now, but that's a good suggestion. We have.
City of Olympia too is soon to come upon their 500th, so instead of reinventing a wheel, and they'll tell you, hey, we wish we would have done this and that, so you may get a better. But I support it 100%. I just left four days with 900 future presidents of Rotary in Zone 25, which is from Bering, Alaska to Roseburg, Oregon. And it was very interesting that our, you know, we're down to two polio cases in the world. That's our deal is in polio. And it didn't matter if you were talking to the folks from any of those folks, in their community, it's housing and heroin, hands down. And so, this isn't a unique thing to just the city of Everett, and they actually even, the guy from Homer, Alaska knew all of, he knew more about housing first than I did. So, the work you're doing is good work.
Just real quick, wanted to say thank you for the leadership that the city's taken on this and the staff work. Megan and I both said on the Streets Initiative, and this is a really important issue, and I know you know that, but thank you for what you're doing, so.
I had a quick comment. As you're doing this research, I don't want to add more work because the low-barrier housing and, and moving on this is very important, but if there's, if you're already looking, could you also maybe consider looking at some temporary housing such as a tent city? Or I already know in Seattle, they changed restrictions around parking, so you can overnight parking and sleep in vehicles?
Actually, our land use code does allow for homeless encampments, and there's a process already in place, so a tent city type of encampment would be possible. And so, that's something that was put into the code about nine years ago when there was a lot of movement, King County East Side communities where tent city was going.
was a lot of movement, King County east side communities where tent city was going back and forth between Woodinville or Kirkland or Redmond and a number of different cities, and we enacted some regulations to allow for that already.
So Alan, do you need a motion to initiate?
I would appreciate a motion.
Go for it. I just wanted to clarify that that's what we needed to do. Didn't mean I was going to do it.
Whatever you do, I'll second it.
The old guy will make a recommendation that the, let me back up. So that we initiate, or does the city council initiate?
We're asking you to initiate consideration of the code amendment.
That's my motion.
The initiation of consideration of the code amendment.
Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Commissioner Lark?
Yes.
Commissioner Zalinski?
Yes.
Commissioner Beck?
Yes.
Commissioner Sand?
Yes.
Commissioner Adams?
Yes.
Commissioner Tisdale?
Yes.
Chair Holland?
Yes.
Okay, on to other business. Anything?
We will have a meeting two weeks from tonight, and this topic will probably be a workshop item as part of that meeting. Don't know what the other topics are off the top of my head, but we've got some things lined up for you for the next meeting on the 16th, or 15th. Yeah, March 15th, two weeks from tonight.
Any other comments? Okay, we're adjourned.